It's called to order this planning and zoning commission meeting for Monday, October the 6th, 2025, 6:30. We have Commissioner McDonald and Commissioner Fuertes both absent today. We do have a quorum with the other five members being present. That takes us to the introduction of agenda and format of hearing, so I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. First, we will have a call to order, followed by a staff report. Then, the applicant can provide a presentation or state that they are just available for questions. Afterwards, we will have the public comments in support or opposition opened up. Please state your name and address for the record, and please be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe. Afterwards, the commission and staff will have their discussion. The commission will then vote to recommend approval as presented, approval with conditions, denial of the request, or to table the item. City Council's consideration of tonight's zone change request will be on the Monday, October 27, 2025, meeting. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we have the approval of the excused absences from the previous meeting, as well as approval of the regular meeting minutes from the last And then, on new business tonight, we have one zoning change from Single Family Residential R1 to Neighborhood Service NS located at 3302 and 3306 Dixie Farm Road. I'll pass it back to you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Katya. Anyone wishing to remove an item from the consent agenda? See, nobody wants to, so I'll entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Commissioner Nichols sold makes a motion to approve.
Commissioner Henry, second.
Yeah, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, passes five to zero. We have no items being removed from the consent agenda. That moves us into new business. Consideration and possible action of zone change application, ZON 2025-0387. A request by Julia Nguyen, applicant on behalf of TJMA Revocable Living Trust in Chin Yang Chao, owners for approval of a zone change for approximately 9.2281 acres of land from Single Family Residential 1, R1 District to Neighborhood Services located at 3302 and 3306 Dixie Farm Road, Pearland, Texas. All right, can I have a motion and a second for approval?
Commissioner Haskins, motion to approve.
Commissioner Ordina, second.
Okay, thank you for having that. That takes us to the staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. My name is Patrick Bauer, and I'll be making the -- presenting the staff report tonight. As mentioned, the request is to rezone from the Single Family Residential 1 zoning district to the Neighborhood Service zoning district, and the applicant's intent is to rezone the subject land to allow for low-intensity neighborhood-oriented commercial services. To date, staff has received seven written comments in opposition to the request, and some of the concerns mentioned in the comments were traffic or impact of traffic from the proposed zone change, change to the character of the area, and there already being enough commercial within the area. So, looking at the zoning of the subject property, as well as surrounding properties, as mentioned, is that R1 is the current zoning district, and then is surrounded predominantly by R1 to the, mostly all to the south, as well as to the northwest, and then some R2. You'll notice the yellow with the red dots are R2, but still a single-family zoning to the northwest, and then to the northeast is that general commercial zoning district. And then, in terms of the surrounding uses, we mostly have large lot residences along Dixie Farm Road. There's a single-family subdivision to the northwest of the subject property. There's a church to the north along Broadway, and then Walmart and the pipeline are to the northeast of the property. In terms of the future land use plan, the subject property is within the traditional residential place type, and that same place type is to the southwest and the southeast. And then, the land to the northeast and the northwest is the commercial center place type. Let's look at a little bit of a history on the property. It was originally annexed, or both properties, because it comprises two, they were annexed in 1960. 3302 Dixie Farm, which is that, call it more of the northern lot that's directly adjacent to Walmart, was developed with the residents in 1945, which was then demolished in between 2016 and 2018. And then, 3306 Dixie Farm, which is more of the southern, more southwestern property, was developed with the residents in 1991, which is currently on the site. And in May 2020, city council denied a zone change request for 3302 Dixie Farm Road only to rezone it to the general commercial zoning district. And so, looking at the future land use plan, the proposed NS district is not consistent with the traditional residential place type. In terms of thoroughfare plan, the subject property has frontage along Dixie Farm Road, which is a major thoroughfare with sufficient width. And in terms of the UDC, it should be noted that if approved, the existing residence at 3306 Dixie Farm Road would be deemed an existing non-conforming use. However, any future redevelopment of the site, if approved, would need to meet all the requirements of the UDC and the corridor overlay district, such as buffering to adjacent residences or buffering for the corridor overlay district for the required landscaping. And then, in terms of utilities, the subject property does have access to water and sewer along Dixie Farm Road. Looking at the approval criteria for a zone change, staff found that the request met three of the four criteria, with it not meeting the future land use plan, as mentioned previously. It does not meet the traditional residential place type with that proposed NS district. And so, while the subject land is designated as the traditional residential place type, staff does find that the subject land could be appropriate for limited commercial uses due to the adjacency to a major thoroughfare and the existing commercial zoning to the northeast, which is that general commercial zoning, which is a more intense zoning. And so, the requested NS district is an appropriate commercial zoning for the subject land, as it serves as a transition between the more intense GC-zoned property to the northeast and the single-family zoned properties to the southwest. And so, therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested zone change from the R1 district to the Neighborhood Service district. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, that takes us to applicant's presentation. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Julia Nguyen, on behalf of TJMA Revocable Living Trust and Mr. Chin Yang Chou and Alex Nguyen here, on behalf of the owner of the two properties located at 3302 Dixie Farm Road and 3306 Dixie Farm Road.
Thank you, everybody, for chatting with us today. My name is Alex, like Julia mentioned. We have several reasons why we'd like to rezone, and as Patrick mentioned, the staff has approved. And looking back at the history of how long we've owned it and the history of these two properties, the Walmart that's adjacent to it, Dixie Farm is in front of it. We understand the concerns of the neighborhood and that surrounds it, and we feel that rezoning to NS, as staff recommended approval for, is a good transition between the general commercial to the residential, because this gives us an opportunity to better the community by adding some buffering and projects and scope of businesses that would help not only with the general community. We understand there's a lot of retail in the area, however, there's not enough, as if you think about, in terms of the aging population that will experience moving forward. I have family there, and we know that there's a need for care and assistance for that type of population. And so, we're thinking that it falls really well into this request. And the whole idea that will bring additional noise and maybe too much traffic, it's something that...
Oh, sorry. Moving on to, you know, the general gist of this presentation here, we want to emphasize the purpose and what it's going to bring to the community as a benefit. It will improve neighborhood service convenience, you know, having local services, you know, in short driving distance, you know, businesses such as medical, dental, wellness facilities, without having to drive too far, or reducing travel time and creating neighborhood buffer, as Alex mentioned. Enhancing local property values, potentially, if it's well-maintained and there's low-intensity services. It could also promote community wellness and connection. Other potential uses such as fitness centers, adult daycare, or assisted living could address needs for nearby families, seniors, and working residents. And it could also align with Pearland's long-term vision, and rezoning, you know, could reflect the city's intent for mixed, accessible, community-focused developments that's consistent with Pearland's 2024 comprehensive plan. So, the property characteristics, both of these, each of these properties are just under five acres in size, which is quite large for a typical single-family lot. The lot shape is, shape and size makes a single-family use inefficient or underutilized. Having both of the subject property rezoning to NS for Neighborhood Service provides flexibility to design multiple low-intensity uses while maintaining open space. Current zoning and use is R1, which is Single Family Residential. Current development is vacant or minimally used, not reflecting the full potential of the properties. The location and accessibility of these two properties are nearby existing commercial areas, such as Walmart and Home Depot, and the direct access to Dixie Farm Road as a major thoroughfare, which is well-suited to support moderate neighborhood traffic. It's also close in proximity to surrounding neighborhoods, which ensures convenience So, there is a property nearby, next to, adjacent to Home Depot, which has already been rezoned to Neighborhood Service, which establishes a precedent. I understand there's some concern regarding traffic, noise, and environmental considerations. However, Dixie Farm Road is a major thoroughfare. You have to understand that. And, you know, a major thoroughfare should be able to handle light traffic increase. Neighborhood Service businesses are also low-noise and daytime-oriented businesses. Require buffers and landscape corridors will protect nearby homes and preserve trees. On this map, and I know it's a little hard to see... So, this was prepared, you know, prior to two more residents adding to the list of opposing... the rezoning. But I've marked here in the red dots, if you can take a look and see, the locations moving up. Well, anyhow, there are five properties at the point of, you know, putting this together, that property owners that have opposed, and out of the five, three were away from, more than 200 feet away from the property. The only two property within 200 feet is 3209 Dixie Farm and 3301 Dixie Farm, which is primarily across the street from 3302 Dixie Farm. Some of the concern from the neighbors were the fact that, you know, there's no transition and buffer that begins and ends, but as, you know, Patrick presented on his report, which is this map right here, it clearly shows where the different zonings are for general commercial, general business, Neighborhood Service, R1 and R2 for Single Family Residential. Some of the other concerns of the neighbors that we like to address is the fact that in a major thoroughfare, a certain amount of road noise exists. It's not ideal to have residences along major thoroughfare road or next to a commercial business where a semi-truck making deliveries in the rear of Walmart at odd hours would just not be desirable for any homeowner to have to experience or live next to. On the other hand, the two property owners on 3301 and 3209 Dixie Farm, across from 3302 Dixie Farm, have purchased their properties knowing these, you know, large commercial businesses are very close by. And if noise wasn't issue, you know, that, they shouldn't have all these properties, honestly. This is why Neighborhood Service would buffer, help buffer the transition. The type of businesses that are being considered under Neighborhood Service, it shouldn't add much more noise or, you know, than it already exists. There would have to be a traffic study to be, study to be done, to be certain, of course, but, you know, the assumptions of noise added, added traffic based, based on just, you know, these ideas could be a misunderstanding, as Neighborhood Service are low-impact and neighborhood-friendly type of businesses. There are a few other properties that are outside of the 200-feet notice area, such as 1615 Pine Crest, 1921 Willow Lake Drive, 3675 Buckhold Street. The zone change shouldn't affect these properties in any negative way that we can think of, because, I mean, they're quite a distance away. And then, 1615 Pine Crest is only a vacant lot, so they don't even live there to be The 2024 comprehensive plan and the future land use map, I'm not sure how, if this is all in one, or one or, you know, they're two separate things, but it does show on there, you know, that this, these two properties are traditional residential, or they are supposed to be traditional residential zoning. However, it does state on the 2024 comprehensive plane, plan, that a comprehensive plan shall not constitute zoning regulations or establish zoning district boundaries. Neighborhood Service zoning improves land use consistency and provides appropriate transitions. In summary, these two properties are just too large for just R1, single-family use. Neighborhood Service zoning is low-intensity and community-serving. It creates logical transition between residential and commercial areas. We will comply with buffering and landscape requirements. It offers convenience and non-invasive services to residents. We respectfully request City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commissions for approval of the rezoning. Thank you.
And we're open to questions and answers right now. Do you have any?
We can't dialogue right now, but we probably will have some questions later on.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, and good neighbors and city employees, my name is Chin Yang Chou. I am the owner of 3306 Dixie Farm Road. We bought a property about 20, 2002, and we were dreamed about having a quiet and nice living as a retirement, when we retired, or living on that property. But soon after we purchased the property, Dixie Farm Road becomes a thoroughfare road, so the traffic becomes real heavy. So, it is not really as a residential lot anymore with the traffic, existing traffic and noise. So, I don't think that traffic and noise is going to be a existing problem for the future development as the community service or Neighborhood Service business, because the community service business, most of the business contain their noise in its own buildings. For instance, the daycare, the senior care, the clinic, or a gym, or any other type of business, the noise is really contained within the building, and the traffic is already there. You have a cheaper Walmart right next to the property, you have a Home Depot. Okay, so, the property is right next to this big box commercial, so the property, the traffic is limited from 518 to this property. It's only like 1,000 feet, something like that, not going any further. And for the neighborhood like Willow Lake, they have a choice. They have a back door going to Lake Fern, go to 518. And for the property right across the street, the Pine Crest, the traffic's already there, so I don't think it's going to affect them at all. So, for the property further south, there is a dump site, a long, long time dump site there already, and not only they have a heavy city dump truck traffic, but also the smell, but, you know, I don't think this is going to make any difference with their life at all. So, I would ask council members a good consideration for change to Neighborhood or Community Service. Thank you for listening.
Okay, that concludes the applicant's presentation. That brings us to the persons wishing to speak for against, and I have some speaker cards here. First one is Greg Nelson. Will you go to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record? And you keep your, you've got a three-minute time limit, sir.
Can I close this computer? My name is Greg Nelson. I live at 1617 Pine Crest Drive. Ms. Danley, should have provided you comments that I've already sent, and I'd like to touch on a couple of these points this evening. I live across Dixie Farm from the two subject properties at the intersection of Pine Crest Drive and Dixie Farm. I'm the third house in on Pine Crest Drive. We have low-density residential tracks behind and in front of our property. In the memo that I sent to you, I spelled, I spelled out the businesses that are within seven-tenths of a mile of these two tracks. We don't need any more businesses in this area, especially given the zoning that they're talking about. Will allow operating or allow operation of late-night or 24-hour businesses, of which there are 40 in the NS zoning uses allowed. Allowing this rezoning of low-density residential to commercial will continue a precedent, if you allow it, and it's going to create a domino effect of change creeping down Dixie Farm Road. They spoke about five-acre tracks. All of the neighbors or all the properties on Dixie Farm are approximately five acres in size. There are new houses that have just been built on similar properties. Like all taxpayers, you and I purchase our properties with the belief that they're going to remain zone residential districts. The two parcels seeking rezoning were acquired in August of 2005 and March of 2021, according to the appraisal district. Those owners knew that there were the existing single-family... will continue a precedent if you allow it. And it's gonna create a domino effect of change creeping down Dixie Farm Road. They spoke about five acre tracks, uh, all of the neighbors or all the properties on Dixie Farm are approximately five acres in size. There are new houses that have just been built on similar properties. Like all taxpayers, you and I purchase our properties with the belief that they're gonna remain zone residential districts. The two parcels seeking rezoning were acquired in August of two thousand and five and March of twenty twenty-one, according to the appraisal district. Those owners knew that there were the existing, single, they, they knew there were existing single-family residential properties. Home Depot was developed in two thousand. Walmart was developed in two thousand and two. These applicants knew of these improvements when they bought the properties and they still bought them. I and others live in fear that you're gonna rezone the properties fronting on Dixie Farm behind and in front of us on Pine Crest and adjacent tracks in Pine Hollow subdivision to commercial tracks. And where does that leave us? We're asking you to stop this changing of the neighborhood now. Don't betray the public's trust. Peril and in this area specifically need green grass, not more asphalt and concrete. And to speak to, they say about there's not that, gonna be that much noise. You put, we've already got two, uh, assisted living properties within the seven tenths of a mile. You have those properties. The garbage gets picked up at five AM in the morning. Delivery trucks come at five AM in the morning. Those things make noise and you're right next to residential properties with what they're asking for. I thank you, and please deny this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Uh, Randall Tackett. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is, uh, Randall Tackett. I live at thirty-three oh three Windcrest Court, which is in fact within the two hundred foot impact zone. We just found out about this about a week ago, so we didn't really have much time to kind of consider what we were gonna say here tonight. But if you were to put another star up there where you had them earlier, I guess it'd be your southwest corner of the property there. That's, that's our property right there. It backs right up to us. So it does have some impact on us. My wife and I bought this property three years ago because we liked the neighborhood, for one thing. Uh, and we liked the fact that behind us was the residential properties as well, going all the way to Dixie Farm Road. One of the things we actually liked about it. We don't wanna see that loss. I agree with everything that the previous, uh, speaker just, just said. I also say that if we're saying, it seems that some of the argument here from the petitioner was that these homes are along Dixie Farm are not suitable for residential uses. Well, there's two more residences right next to these properties. If you look further south there, there's a brand-new development going in with ten or eleven, uh, lots there. Two of those properties are already being built. They've got the entire shell. I, I don't know if anyone has told those people that their homes are not suitable for residential use. I think that'd kind of be an important point. I don't really think I have three minutes worth to, to give here, but I am in opposition. Uh, we don't need more commercial expansion. If, uh, literally all you gotta do is go down to five eighteen, you can turn right and turn left. You've got all the services that you need to include medical, dental, restaurants, uh, every other service you can think of. So I don't see the sense in congesting this and creating more noise.
Thank you, Mr. Tackett. Uh, that brings us to Diane Leverton. State your name and address for the record, ma'am, and you have three minutes.
My name is Diane Leverton. I live at twenty-three ten Buckhold Street, Pearland, Texas, seven seven five eight one. Um, I am opposed to this request, and I'm gonna shift a little bit with what I'm gonna say. Um, I'm gonna start off by saying I find it interesting that the requester of the Zone Change already has the feedback. I don't know that I've ever been to the first public hearing where they've already gotten the feedback. So maybe the process has changed because it's been a while since I've been here. Um, the, I went between Parrotwood Skating Rink and Liberty Drive on five eighteen. Here are the vacancies. The bank building next to Walgreens where they tried to put the salads to go in, in, in two thousand and twenty-three, still vacant, hasn't been taken down, so something else can go there. There's a vacant space in Marco's Pizza Strip Center. Fifteen oh six East Broadway either has several vacancies or even the entire building is empty. Fourteen sixteen East Broadway is empty. Vacant space in the Starbucks, uh, Strip Center. Two vacant spaces in the one eight hundred Plumbers Strip Center. Fourteen fifteen East Broadway. Vacant space in the Subway Strip Center, the Bayou Grill Strip Center, the Leslie's Pool Strip Center, and two thousand and ten East Broadway. We have a ton of vacancy on this side of town. And it looks like it's a dying community. And I don't wanna see us adding more Neighborhood Services so we can potentially have, uh, more vacant properties. If we are looking at a living facility or something like that for elderly people, I did not know that. We need to go back and look at the two thousand and ten request that was submitted for the old horse stable right near Rayburn Lane across from Dixie Woods, and I think Mr. Eisenberg lives in Dixie Woods. That property was deemed not realistic to have what they wanted to put there. And it was because the garbage truck, it was because of, um, all the traffic, the lighting. You had employees going in and out and the services that needed to provide, be provided for that facility. It sounds to me like this could be the same kind of setup. That was a ten-acre piece of property also, surrounded by residential, just like this one is for, on three sides of it. And, um, so I think that might be good to go back. I still have that paper copy if you can't find it electronically. So let me know if you wanna compare. Another thing about the vacancy, um, that land behind Home Depot, they were trying to sell that back in two thousand and eight. I don't know if they sold it and it's somebody else now trying to sell it. But that's a long time that nothing has been done with that land. And I can't help but think companies are thinking that that's not a good place to put something. Uh, because otherwise, I think with how much, uh, Pearland was growing back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and seven compared to now, there was much more potential for those companies than there is today. So I just ask that the Planning and Zoning Committee turn this down and keep it residential. That's what it is in the land use plan, and why are we having a land use plan if we're not going to, uh, follow it? Um, it has always been said in the past when I've been here that following the land use plan is very important for our community to maintain its standards. And now we're trying to deviate from that, and I think that's a big mistake because there are still new homes going in on Dixie Farm. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Leverton. Okay, uh, I'm gonna ask again, is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposal? Uh, asking one more time, there anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposal? Seeing no one, I'm gonna move it on to, uh, uh, commission and staff, so, uh, start off with commissioners, right?
Thanks, sir. Um, thank you all for, for coming tonight and, and voicing your opinions. A couple of questions. Uh, for the, for the owners, um, is it the intent to have the zone change and then build yourself, or are you going to sell once the zone? Because, because your presentation spoke to, this is why the zone change should go, but you didn't indicate as to what you'd be zoning with the zone change, which, no, that doesn't isn't a reason why we should vote yea or nay, but it speaks to intent. And it speaks to, you know, are we getting a Starbucks? Or are we getting, you know, something closer to a, a Walmart, like a Dollar General? And, and those kinds of things under Neighborhood Services, that's, that's what we and council wants to see. So if you're not the end-all-be-all developer, uh, that kind of, in my mind, changes things a little bit. Um, I'll let you answer, and then I have some more.
Sure. Um, the, when we first purchased the property, uh, I can speak to the thirty-three oh two. Uh, the intent was to build residential there. And what we noticed that was because we back up right to the dumpster of Walmart, there was, uh, an awful smell and, and, and the deliveries and whatnot. And so we, uh, after several years of just studying what's there and how inconvenient and, and, uh, whatnot, it would be right next to a Walmart, we felt, uh, the need to put it up for sale and see if we can just move on. But what we noticed is, as people wanted to, uh, they inquired about the property, uh, they also noticed these things. And so there's, um, there's a negative aspect of living behind the dumpster of a Walmart. And, and so if you're going to build, uh, of, you know, on a four and a half acre lot for one single house, then I think you don't wanna spend that type of money to live right behind the dumpster of a Walmart. And if we subdivide it, then there's just more houses along that backside. And, and so it, it just makes it a very, um, say, not a, a non-residential, um, place to be right, right there. Now, further down Dixie Farm, you don't have that problem. So that's, that's one aspect of it. When we, um, inquired further about, uh, maybe changing it so that, because we noticed that Dixie Farm is, is growing, uh, as, as well as the rest of Pearland. And so we wanted to maybe build a, uh, a, a, a commercial, uh, Neighborhood Service ourself. But in order to do that, we have to change the zoning. So are we going to build it ourself or sell it and have somebody build it? Um, we don't know what that future is, but that, that's our initial goal is we want to make, we, we purchased it for investment, just like all of us. When we buy a house, we want it to appreciate it, right? And then when, you know, when the time comes, we sell it, give our kids savings and, you know, create a legacy. This is something we wanted to do for this property, but what we're noticing is it's, it's a tough property to work with now. And, and so the Neighborhood Service would help alleviate some of that concern, um, not only for the existing, uh, neighborhood people. Uh, they don't have to deal with the Walmart, you know, dumpsters. But they do have to deal with a smaller, uh, convenient, um, business.
I also wanna just add, you know, uh, in response to a couple of the, um, the speakers opposing, businesses come and go.
Ma'am, ma'am, this is the time that we, we're gonna ask questions of y'all. Y'all had y'all's chance.
Excuse me?
And, and, uh, the other people. So we have, if we have questions for you, that's, that's what this time's for. Try, you got anything else?
So, okay, so, so from what I gathered, you're, you're you're not one hundred percent sure what you are going to do, but the intent is that you are going to develop it under the Neighborhood Services, not sell off the property once it's changed.
We're, we're not a hundred percent certain at this time.
Okay.
Yes.
Um.
But we, we try our best to try to make it happen. Uh, you know, it's, as, as a regular American people, you need a, uh, we don't have that big capital to make it happen. But if, if we have this zone changed, then we can start gathering our ideas and then fund, you know, capitals and ask for support, not maybe, you know, that would possibly make it happen. But without a zone change, then not, nothing would happen. That's, that's what we're asking for. And I wanna, I wanna, we'd like to correct a record. A gentleman says, "I purchased a property knowing that Super Walmart was there." No, that's wrong. We had a lease purchase with that property.
Okay.
And Super Walmart was not there.
Okay, again, this is questions for, sorry, sorry, Daryl. I apologize. Thank you. I appreciate it. So to, to, to the point that, that it, it could have or it should have been developed, then, I, I mean, the, the, if I read the, the notes correctly, um, about six years ago, the, the city, uh, council denied a zone change to, uh, to commercial district? So, uh-
It was general commercial, not neighborhood.
Okay. So I, I guess my point is, and, and this is, it, it just, if somebody wanted to develop it into a neighborhood center, they've had six years to, to do so. If it was, if it was marketable in such a way that some small business, small little strip center, some sort of buffer between residential and heavy commercial or commercial, someone would have come along the way. So to, to the point, to the point that you wanna change it and then try and figure out that, that, that might have or should have or could have already been done in six years after it got denied by council, so.
You're right. A lot has happened. Uh, COVID happened and then, uh, economy-
Right, right. But understandably, there's been developments and there's been things of this nature happening since then, right? So the, the point that I'm making is obviously those that think it could be something in neighborhood center think that it's actually better to be left as residential. I don't know. Maybe that's a thought that no one's picking it up that way. To the point, though, I will agree. You'll, everywhere that you have commercial, you do want some sort of less commercial to buffer down to residential. I do agree with that. And I agree that if it were residential, who would want to, to the, to the point to, to the citizens bringing concerns? Who would want to live there? They're both valid points. And the market has to dictate that, right? But at the same time, if you don't want a neighborhood center, and this is rhetorical, we don't need to answer it. If you don't want a neighborhood center, but you don't want heavy commercial and you want it to stay residential, then, I mean, everyone's got the right to develop their, their piece of property. And so if it's not a buffer and it's not something like commercial, then I, I rhetorically ask, what do you want that, that allows a landowner to develop? It's, it's, it's just a rhetorical kind of thinking about it, knowing full well that there needs to be a transition between single-family residential and heavy commercial in and around all cities. I mean, we, we don't just get nice big green spaces in between just, just because, I mean, everyone gets to develop their property. Um, that's all I had. Thank you.
May I add to that, um, note where?
Patrick, I have a question for you. In reading this, it says that the survey indicates that there's three parcels of land, but staff does not have a subdivision of thirty-three or two reflecting the two tracks.
Yeah, so it's, and the survey's kind of broken up, kind of interesting. They're kind of older properties. They've never actually been platted. So they wouldn't, you wouldn't see like a lot one, block one, but essentially the southern property, it was broken up at, it's broken up as two on all the surveys. That's really just the difference. But there, if you look at tax records, like if you look at this map, you can't see it as well, but based on the tax records, they are two separate, um, parcels for taxing purposes. So that's why I kind of mentioned the S two, and they have two, uh, addresses. They don't have like three separate addresses. It's really just how the surveyor has described it over time from when it was originally, going back to like the seventies, eighties, nineties, two thousand, so.
But it really is three tracks of land, because I know when she was making the statement, she said each of, one of them is around five acres. And when I read it, like one's two point seven five, one's one point nine, and one's four point-
Yeah, and so one owner owns, I guess you'd say the northern half is one tract of land and they own that. And then the one to the south, it's all part of the same survey. Whenever they did the deed and passed it over, it's described the same, but it, it essentially describes it as two tracks. And that's something you see across surveys. It's not anything to, whenever they plat, they will have to meet or any, anyone who develops it or anything, it would have to meet our, uh, requirements, which would, at that point, we would fix it and add it into one property because you would likely run into a frontage issue if you, I think the other tract is more at the rear. So that's something that it just hasn't been platted whenever it gets developed with whatever use, whether it's residential or commercial, it'd be at that time that the plating would kind of fix that.
Again, thank you for coming. Thank you for your presentation, also for you speakers that have spoke in opposition. Thank you for coming up and giving us your side as well. What's interesting is in our emails on public comments, there was spreadsheet of fourteen emails that were- that were sent in, in opposition. There were two letters that were sent in on email, and appreciate those letters, also numerous telephone calls. And what, what is concerning me the most is Neighborhood Services is something that can be narrow, or with, through the CUP, it can be broad. We have a piece of property that was rezoned NS, right next to someone's house, will be what has been approved so far that I know, that I can remember, is a general dollar store and a McDonald's. And with that, for the, for the neighbors around this property, I'm a negative, so thank you.
Okay, I want to say thank you to everybody that came up and spoke. I think that it makes logical sense that there is somewhat of a buffer, I don't see these tracks turning into residential, not next to a GC track, and I would not be a fan of these tracks extending the general commercial. I have looked at the Neighborhood Services, Neighborhood Services could be things like a daycare, could be a veterinary clinic, an office clinic, a medical clinic. I don't see them putting McDonald's next to way in the back of the lot, if they were to do that, they'd put it in the front, but they're probably not going to go that far back. I just think the logical thing for, I think this is a tough spot for a landowner, because, yeah, no one's going to build a residential home on either of these lots, and certainly not backing up to a Walmart. And I don't think that this community would want a townhome or apartment complex there. I think they'd probably rather have some medical clinic, I could be wrong, but I think they'd probably be more in favor of that, but just in looking in Neighborhood Services, I know you mentioned a McDonald's, but that would have had to been a conditional use, that's not permitted by allowed use, and I think that the uses that are listed under Neighborhood Services, nothing on here is, seems like it would be a 24-hour, very obnoxious or loud type of use. Other than that, that's, that's pretty much my comment.
I too want to thank everybody for coming out. One of the problems I've got with number, number one, 3302 Dixie Farm, that's going to be a tough lot, and, and I certainly understand about living by the, building a house right there by the Walmart dumpster, but what's concerning to me is we didn't see a drainage plan, we don't see a building plan, we, just asking on blind faith, change this. It looks more to me that it's maximizing the price of this property more than it is about building something. I, I just, I can't get there with the way that it's been presented. I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that coming up here and not having a, a plan of attack on what we're going to be seeing is, is a, is a way to, way to do it. So many times that we get these properties, it's usually the zone has not even been changed, and they come up here and they give us what they're going to build, and they give us the drainage, where, where they're going to put their detention, and, and try to, to quiet the, the, the concerns of the, the neighbors and stuff. I know that across the road, you know, I don't know where we, where it went to or anything, but at one time, we had some, some, some services there that's going to be out in front, and there was going to be an assisted living in the back, and the detention was going to be over there, next to the subdivision over there to keep the distance away from the living areas, to try to minimize that. This here, I, I don't, I, you know, all I see is, let us, let's change our zone, our zone change, but there's no plan in, in, this committee is called Planning and Zoning. So in my eyes, before I could even think about changing the zone, I would have to see a plan of attack. All right, anybody, anybody else on commission? No less. All right, we're going to call for the vote. All those in, in favor of approval for this, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, bells one to four. Okay, that takes us to discussion items, City Council update report.
Thank you, Chair. So, a couple of Mondays ago, September 22nd was when we had quite a few items go on to Council's agenda for consideration. Council sought to have the expansion of the warehouse and light assembly, that's, that was for Enders Housers' expansion that they're planning on doing. That was approved six to zero. There was a request for the accessory dwelling unit on Wingtail Way. You remember, that's in the Wesleya subdivision. That was approved with a four to three vote. Then the, y'all may remember the recreation center that was on 1826 O'Day, that drew out quite a crowd. There was some good discussion, again, with the residents out there, and discussion with Council about the proposed location and mixture of uses and whatnot, that ended up failing with a zero to six vote. Then the two-family dwelling, so the duplex on Grand Street, that was like four or five units there, that ended up being postponed to have some further discussions about potential for the alleyway to be extended. So that's working through Economic Development Corporation right now, to figure out if there's means to be able to provide for the alley and help offset a little bit of that cost. Then, it was quite a busy night. Then there was the SOLV-KIM discussion. SOLV-KIM was eventually approved with conditions. The one condition that they did adjust was the, the condition from P&amp;Z, which was, they ended up with Changed the masonry fence to an eight-foot landscape screen with ornamental trees, with chain-link fence inside of the vegetation line. So either way, I think we'll get a good buffer along that, the residential lots there. That was the SOLV-KIM property off of Makawa and Schenk. And then last, but certainly not least, as y'all may have noticed, y'all have Old Town Challenge Coins. Old Town did get approved with its, you know, final reading with Council, and as a little memento, we had those made, since everyone put in such a hard time working on that plan, and it was a great fun to be had, seeing the community come out for that. So with that, Chair, I'll pass it back to you.
That's all you got? Okay, that brings us to, okay, what is this, Planning and Zoning Seminal Calendar? Are, is that anything for us?
Yes, I can cover that.
Okay.
All right, so 2026 is right around the corner, and so in your packets, we have the 2026 Seminal schedule for our zoning change and plan development, as well as our conditional use schedule and our plating Seminal calendar. The plating calendar is going to be the most comprehensive and provide all the meetings for next year. We have 20 meetings next year, two per month, except on, for January, April, September, and December, to accommodate holidays. And I will show, also, we have Tuesday meetings, the second meeting, the only meeting in January, and the second meeting in May. This dot map is a little overwhelming, but let's focus on the orange dots. Those are your meetings for next year. I did. But this is kind of a, it's, if you focus in on one color, you can see the different colors, and so when you're looking at marking out your calendars, this potentially could assist you if you wanted to come back to this meeting and look at this, but generally, the plat Seminal schedule will tell you all the meetings that you need to be here for.
Did these get emailed to us?
They're included in your packet.
Okay, thank you. Great job on the, on the, on the dotting.
Yes. And if there's any questions, we're here to help.
Okay, thank you, Katja. Next Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is October the 20th. Does anyone know that they will not be here? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 7:31.